Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board for Monday, September 11, 2023. For those not in attendance, it is also available via Zoom per the agenda posted to the town website at 6:01, and we will call the meeting to order with a roll call. Sherri Corrick?
Here.
Mike Baptiste?
Here.
Jane Gleason?
Here.
Sam Corbett?
Here.
Carl Schultz?
Here.
And Chair Michael King is here, so we have a full board. Preliminary business, discussion and possible vote acceptance of Candle Paper Lane. This is, I guess, a letter that we're going to send to the Board of Selectmen with our opinion as to whether they put it forth at the town meeting.
To adopt the road.
To adopt the road.
Is Ken here? Because I didn't really understand what we were recommending regarding the catchment.
Well, it's my, it's my understanding that part of the caveat for adopting the road is that the HOA put something in place to ensure the maintenance and upkeep of the drainage, and that they've been unwilling to put, say, such agreement in place. They just want us to adopt the road. So for me, that's a problem.
And even if we move forward and they put something in place, there's no enforcement.
Correct.
So I'm not in favor of the town taking on any more responsibility, and the HOA has got to step up because that's what was agreed to when they bought the damn property.
Right. And my question was, what's the upside to the town adopting the property? And the answer I was given is none. There is no benefit, other than added responsibility and a cost. So if the people that live on that road are unwilling to participate, then I don't see where it makes sense for us to recommend that we adopt the road.
But if they're paying millions of dollars of taxes?
Well...
I mean, like, you can't...
I understand your point 100%, but let me give you a counterpoint. So before I sold my house and I lived over on Tohannet Pond, that's a private road.
Yep.
With the escalation of prices, those houses are closing in on a million dollars.
Yep.
And they, we paid to have that road plowed. It was private road.
So paying all that, you don't think the town should plow it for you? Given you're paying millions of dollars of taxes?
If you, if you choose to live on a private road, which I think comes with a certain status, and that was one of the reasons why I bought that house, was because it was on a private road, and you pay HOAs to address... I mean, we paid HOAs, and we did clean the catch basins. It was in the HOA. It wasn't a huge expense. We did it, like, every two or three years. They came in and cleaned out the catch basins, and it didn't affect the HOA fees at all. They never went up from the time I, the whole time I lived there. So I don't see where the townspeople that are living on that road should have such a sticking point in agreeing to participate in keeping the catch basins clean. In return, they're going to save thousands of dollars a year in snowplow fees. But it's a pretty fair trade-off.
Well, I live on a private street. I pay HOA, and I don't see any benefit. The HOA pays taxes, insurance, that's all. And I think it's 300 bucks every couple of months.
Every quarter. Yeah, a quarter, yeah.
And that's all it covers. And it's only eight houses on one street, eight on another, two on another, and we pay... The value of the little tiny neighborhood is over $10 million.
Mm-hmm.
And the town is collecting a lot of money. I think for that amount of money, the town should take responsibility. And in most cases, the HOA is developed by the builder, not the people who live there. They don't choose it. They buy the house, and they say, oh, by the way, there's an HOA.
Well, usually...
They chose it when they bought the house.
Right. And usually, there's a, there's a, there's a term.
It's a condition on the deed. It's a deed restriction.
Right. And like with ours, the HOA was initially created by Makepeace because they developed that property, but it stated quite clearly in the deed that the HOA was their responsibility for 10 years.
Mm-hmm.
And at the 11th year, it was handed to the homeowners. It was their responsibility to run the HOA, independent of the builder.
So here I go further because often when these applications for subdivision come before us, there's conditions we don't place on it because of the HOA. So if the developer is playing the game that says, okay, I'll pretend we're going to do an HOA, I'll pretend that they're going to manage the catch basins, I'll pretend they're going to maintain the street, and then they won't form an HOA, they won't do any of those things, and the town will end up taking it anyway. They can't have it both ways.
There are HOAs all over town.
I understand that.
I mean, huge neighborhoods that the town takes care of. They plow, they pave, they do everything, and it's treated like it's not an HOA, although it is. All over town.
The town can't afford to do that, and I don't know why they do.
And I was under the impression that the town stopped plowing private roads.
No.
So that was the information I was given.
I mean, there's miles and miles of road, all over town.
I understand that as well.
So why should those people have the benefit, and these new people, the new HOA don't? And I could list 10 areas that we take care of completely in town. The HOAs, they collect money, they have tennis courts, they have beaches, they have clubhouses. They're treated like it's not an HOA, all over town. And we're going to make these people, we're going to treat these people differently.
Well, I understand and I appreciate your position. I just don't agree with it.
Okay.
You know, when those people bought them houses, they bought them with the impression that they were an updated community. And I agree with Sam 100%. That's been going on for years. There's one down on Fellowship Way off a county road that passed off to the town, same thing, got signed off, and that road's in deplorable condition because it was a shit hole in the beginning. So we're going to go, our tax dollars is going to go fix that road. I mean, it's down, the binder's even breaking up. It's so bad. And maybe it's time the town stepped up and started doing inspections and, you know, pushing them to make it do what they're supposed to do.
My point is, they are all over town.
Well, maybe it's time they cleaned it up. You know, it's not right. Linnwood Estates was a good example. What did it cost the town to fix that road? Cleanse road. They beat us up for years for the town to accept it. They went to town meeting, they passed it, and the town spent a lot of money fixing that road.
So just to be clear, we're not voting whether the town does or not. We're just voting whether the planning board recommends an action.
Correct.
So the select board and town meeting can still do whatever.
They could still adopt it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. Sherri?
It seems to me that there should be a factual answer on what the town's policy is that is, that we can look at and see whether this fits in with it or not. My understanding was that with private roads, the town did not take on these responsibilities.
That was true.
So I would like a factual answer on that so that we can figure out... [phone ringing] But I align myself with comments that say we should not be taking on additional financial responsibilities, given where we are with all of the obligations hanging over the town at this point.
Jane?
I think I'm in agreement with that, that we need to know what the policy is, and we need to be consistent. And it's unclear what, what the actual policy is.
Right. I think, I think it's, I think officially, the policy is they don't maintain private roads. I think unofficially, it's a case of, you know, who knows who, who's related to what, and, you know...
Lives on the street.
Who lives on the street, and...
And I'm not crazy about rules like that.
I don't like rules like that either.
I don't either. No, I don't think that's right.
I, I mean, this can easily be dealt with as far as whether it's approved, adopted or not adopted at town meeting. I mean, our discussion here, I don't think lends a ton of weight, but if it were my decision, well, my vote would be that we don't adopt it, that we don't suggest that the town adopted. But that we, moving forward past this discussion, we do get some definitive information as to what is the concrete town policy and how is it being applied.
And I think the other thing that I would consider is, what is the benefit to the town?
There is none.
It's a cul-de-sac, it's kind of a private way that is not of...
It's not a thorough fit, you know, pass-through to one another.
Right. It's not a connecting road.
Right.
Right. So the chances that someone who doesn't live down there, or is visiting, somebody who lives down there, uses that road...
Are slim.
Are slim.
The postman, the Amazon delivery man.
Which is the whole point of living on a cul-de-sac, but, but that comes at a price. But it does, I think, need to be a fair policy that the town has and practices.
Right.
So...
And I thought, quite honestly, I thought the town's position was, was fair and equitable. Create a natural way, maintain the drainage, which, to my understanding, is all the town asked them of. It wasn't participate in the cost of the snow plowing or the repaving 25 years from now. It was just maintain the drainage system. And the residents haven't... They, no, their flat said they don't want to do it. So...
So I don't like people who hold the gun to our head and say, tough, you got to do it.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to suggest to the Board of Selectmen for Town Meeting that the Planning Board does not endorse adopting Candle Paper Lane. Do I have said motion?
Can we say that for a further study? That's what everybody else says.
Yeah, but will we, I mean, will we have time, or will it get pushed past to the spring meeting?
Push this one back till we do a further study, till we come back and get some information, you know?
Yeah, I think that there is some information that's missing.
So if I rephrase the request, entertain a motion to put off any action on whether to recommend or not recommend adopting Candle Paper Lane until, for further study. All right, Mike, came out of your mouth. You could...
That's my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mike Baptiste, seconded by Jane Gleason. All in favor. Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
No.
Carl?
No.
And the chair votes aye.
So 4-2-0.
Prior to opening the public hearings, I am going to defer to Carl Schultz for point of order concerning the applications.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Buckland, are you here? No. Okay.
I think he's out this week.
I know, but I didn't know if he was going to be here. Okay, so I would like to, to make a statement with respect to these two applications, separate statements. With regard to 1123 Wareham PVC 1 LLC Site Plan Review 025, I would like to establish, before we open the public hearing, that the board's position is, and after review with Town Attorney, that we have historically treated solar applications as requiring both site plan review and special permit, as defined in Article 15, and historically, we have treated them as a combined application, but requiring both a site plan review and a special permit, and that the Planning Board is the Site Plan Review Authority as well as the Special Permit Granting Authority. And that is my understanding of our position, and upon advice of council, that has been our historical approach. I don't know if we need discussion, but that's how I'm operating with respect to this application.
And I've had that similar conversation with Town Council as well, and he's reaffirmed that because of our history with dealing with projects like this, that it is a site plan review and special permit. Does anybody have?
I've had similar conversations, not all three of us, no more than 12 of us at a time, sometimes alone, but that is his affirmation of what our authority historically has been. And as we approach this case, I would expect that we would proceed under that combined authority.
Okay. So that is my comment with respect to that. With respect to 1223 370 County Road LLC Site Plan Review Special Permit 370 County Road, is there anyone here for that application?
370 County Road?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Again, I would like to establish that this application did file for site plan review and special permit. However, the application states that site plan review would come before the Planning Board, and the special permit would go to the zoning board. Again, I'll refer to our historical approach, as I stated before, that I believe the town historically has treated, and our position is, that the Planning Board is the Site Plan Review Authority as well as the Special Permit Granting Authority. That's point one regarding that application. The second point regarding that application is, in reviewing it, it was a little unclear what version of the bylaws you were using, as well as it was unclear that our peer review used the correct view, or what I believe to be the correct view, or version of the bylaws. So my understanding is that the version of the bylaws that this application is subject to is the version revised April 24, 2023.
Yes.
Okay. But however, the references made in the documentation did not, did not refer to this version of the bylaws. Okay. So those two points established, and the applicants heard, and they can, they can take what action they need. The last point I would like to make is a question, or at least an open so that everyone's aware, that in April of 2022, the town adopted revised solar bylaws, significantly different than what's in the version of the bylaws that we just referred. Those bylaws are still under review by the AG, and we're expecting to hear next Monday a ruling on that. What I, what my impression is, but I don't know how it works, or the whole legal is, is that should the AG approve those, that those bylaws become retroactive, and your application would be then subject to those bylaws, and the application doesn't meet those bylaws. So I'm not sure how we deal with that. That's, that's my question. So I wanted to put that on the table before we started.
Okay. Very good. All right. Having that stated and in the record, I would now entertain a motion to open the public hearing for 11-23 Wareham PV1 LLC Site Plan Review and Special Permit 025. Do I have said motion?
You have to read the...
You mean the...
The notice.
The notice that I don't have?
Unless, unless we waive the reading of the notice.
Let me just check real quick to see if it's here. If it's not, then we can vote to waive it. I have it.
Good, good.
Good job, Sonya. Okay, so, notice of public hearing. Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on September 11, 2023, at 6:00 PM in Room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571. To consider petition 11-23 for a site plan review, again, and I'm going to reiterate, and special permit, from the requirements of Table 320, Article 5, Section 590, and Article 15 of the Wareham Zoning Bylaws, to Wareham PV1 LLC Care of VHB of 101 Walnut Street, Watertown, Mass., 02472, for a proposed 3.5-megawatt AC large-ground-mounted solar energy facility located at 025 Wareham, Mass., assesses MAP 115 Watt 1000 in the R130 zoning district. Read for you by Wareham Planning Chairman, me, Michael King. So we have a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion by Jane Gleason, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Sherri? Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Is there someone here? I know there's someone here. I see you, even with my wrong glasses.
Mr. King, before we start, can I have, I have a question for the applicant when we're, when we're ready?
Of course.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the applicant. I think this is probably for Mr. Clavens. I'm reading Ms. Ebaugh's introduction letter, and actually, she's making reference to the 2019 and the 2023 bylaws. Are you actually applying under both bylaws? I would have thought we were reviewing it only under the 2019 bylaws.
So the land is subject to an ANR plan freeze?
Right. That's what I, that's what I thought.
Yeah. And the plan freeze was from, it was, the plan was endorsed in July 2021. So the, the applicable bylaw would be October 2019, except to the extent that there are dimensional regulation changes since then.
Okay. So the changes to Section 590, though, would not apply to your application. Is that correct?
It would depend on the nature of the changes.
They were pretty significant. Okay, so you'll have to wait. I mean, those are knowable, but...
Yeah.
Okay, because I'm surprised that it said that. I wasn't even considering that we would have to think about that for your application.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll have more information next Monday.
Correct.
Thank you.
Before we dive into the weeds, to Mr. Schultz's point, I just want to, I want to make sure that we're all singing from the same page. So we are all, under the assumption, we are here for a site plan review special permit?
Yes. We understand that's what you call it, and how you treat it, and understood...
Just want to make sure we're all reading from the same hymnal.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes. So, hope you all had a good summer. Please be back before you again. Let me just introduce the folks that we have here today. I'm John Clavens, counsel to the applicant. With me, Matt Thornton from Long Road Energy. On Zoom, we have Lindsay Kester from Long Road Energy, and you know Sarah Ebaugh from VHB. The application that we filed as a replacement application in late June with your assistance was for materially the same project that we've pored over for many, many months, but with a notable omission of the battery energy storage component that we understood raised concerns that couldn't be resolved in such a timely fashion. So we wanted to make it easier for you and easier for us. Because a significant amount of time has elapsed, and this is a new public hearing, we wanted to kick off with Sarah's giving a presentation that will be a full presentation, but should largely be a refresher for everybody on the board and the public. There's one procedural item I wanted to review with the board, which is, since we all devoted so much time and effort in the last proceeding over many, many months, we wanted to request that the board vote to include all the documents and all the information from the prior proceeding into the record of the current proceeding. We think that will be a big time saver and a benefit to the board, to the public that spent a lot of time creating and submitting materials in the last proceeding, and to us, of course. We did receive just on Friday, peer review comments from Mr. Cordero. We thank the board and thank Mr. Cordero for providing them to us, and thank him for his careful attention to the application. We have reviewed them and can actually speak to the comments today. We'll be providing written responses in due course for the record, but we are here having reviewed them. I understand Mr. Cordero is here, and we're all in favor of facilitating whatever discussion would be helpful to, to move the process along. All right. I wanted to turn it over to Sarah.
Thank you. Good evening, Sarah Ebaugh from VHB. We are the site civil engineer for the project. As John mentioned, I know you guys are fairly familiar with the site already, so I'll just give a brief overview of, again, the design intent, review the stormwater management system, and then open it up to any questions. So, as you know, the site is located at 025. It's bounded by Route 25 to the south, the municipal maintenance yard, and existing vegetation to the west and north, and existing wetlands, and cranberry bogs to the east. Access to the site is provided by an existing access road off of Charge Pond Road, which bisects the site and continues east. Under existing conditions, the north of that access road has been previously cleared. So right now, it's a sandy depression with some existing vegetation to remain. South of that road is existing forest land with some pockets of area that are previously cleared and just grassy areas. Under the proposed project with the solar array, we are providing a 50-foot setback from the property line to the proposed fence line, which is the limit of our development. That 50-foot setback has existing vegetation that will remain, and within the fence, it will be gated, locked, and provide signage as required by the fire department. So within our development, we, of course, have the solar panels themselves. We have three small concrete pads for the electrical equipment and transformers required for support of the solar array. We have two surface infiltration basins, which I'll get into a little bit more detail in a second, as well as a 20-foot-wide gravel access road that goes through the site, both to the very north and to the very south point. Two turnarounds have been provided on that gravel access road at either end. This alignment and the turning movements have also been reviewed by the Wareham Fire Department. As I'm sure the board is aware, the fire department has provided a letter noting that they don't have any additional comments at this time. Within the, again, limits of the development, so underneath the panels themselves and surrounding it, we will be installing a meadow mix. Specifically, it will be the northeast pollinator 3 mix that was requested by the Planning Board at previous hearings. So that meadow mix and pollinator mix has similar runoff rates to the existing forested land at the south of the site, and based on installing that meadow mix on the existing sand, we are improving the ground cover on that area of the site. The drainage patterns, patterns themselves on site will remain relatively the same from existing to proposed conditions. A small amount of earthwork is proposed to, one, level existing stockpiles of sand on the site, and two, just make sure that we have appropriate slopes for the panels themselves and the gravel access drive to be constructed. Overall, there's no net import or export of soil, just to reiterate that as well, on site. So the majority of the stormwater design comes into play at the south side of the site, since we are clearing the trees and installing that gravel road. Because of that, for peak rate mitigation, we are providing the two surface infiltration basins. As we've previously discussed, preliminary test pits were performed, and to make sure we're adhering to the Massachusetts standards, additional test pits will be formed, be performed prior to construction to ensure that the soil conditions within the exact footprint of these basins match what we found in those preliminary test pits. The surface basins are controlled with an outlet control structure and a small overflow weir. both of which control the flow out of these basins towards the existing wetlands. So there is no connection to the existing municipal system. It sheet flows through the existing vegetation that will remain to those wetlands east of the site. As John mentioned, we have reviewed the comments from Alan and Major, and very much appreciate the quick turnaround. There are some changes to the site plans and stormwater report that will come out of those comments. But I just want to reiterate that any changes we make to the stormwater system, the overall design intent, that there will be no peak rate increase between existing and proposed conditions will be met, and we'll be sure to adhere to all the 10 stormwater standards. So that is my brief overview and reminder of the project. Have you to take any questions from the board or public?
Questions?
So, just to, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to go ahead and ask it. You made reference to some pads for energy equipment. Not your intent to put batteries there at the current time, correct?
Correct. Strictly transformers and the equipment cut sheets that have been provided in the application. So not, not related to battery energy storage.
Okay. And remind me of how many acres of forest you intend to clear?
It is about 8.1 acres of tree clearing.
Okay. That's all I have right now. Oh, I'm sorry, one more.
Nope.
This, this will also be predictable. Where are you guys on your interconnection situation?
We're still awaiting the SIP proceedings that our source is completing, so.
So no decision yet has been made by the DPU?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I do want to note there's one issue in the application before the board, maybe two. They're asking for a waiver for the 18-inch tree inventory. I think we should discuss that. That's, that's been a, an issue that we've had to deal with in the past, and I think the next applicant also is looking for that waiver. So we have to talk about that, make a decision. I note that the applicant in their decommissioning plan is offering a bond structured in the way that we, we were looking based on the NHIL, NHREL document, and, yeah, NREL, that we had, had been using to guide us, so I thank you for that. Ms. Ebaugh, Ebaugh referenced the solar pollinator mix, which we had requested. I appreciate that. The other, I just want to confirm that we're going to have the 50-foot buffer. And that was the only, I think, other than that, the application pretty much worked its way down to the last items that we had.
That we were discussing.
I don't, I don't remember that there were any real open issues best, past that point. You mentioned natural heritage, you mentioned endangered species. I don't remember if you mentioned ancient ways, but I think in your, in your application, you addressed those points and said they were not applicable. The only point that we need to look at in the future is how do we substantiate those claims? But we're, we're trying to deal with that. But at least you addressed the, the issues. I didn't, I didn't see anything else in there. Oh, the other thing I want to note is the applicant committed to any panels that are removed either during operation or as part of any decommissioning operation would be recycled. So that was a commitment. There's not really any specifics, but at least there was a commitment in the application, and I think we should, should we, should we approve the application, at least make that one of the orders of conditions.
One of the things that caught my eye was in the application letter, or, yeah, I think it was the informational letter, you referenced the fact that the new project is being presented to us without the battery storage component, but that you kind of reserved the right to readdress that subject with the, the board later on. Can you kind of expand on that?
Sure. You know, battery storage is still a viable, important technology that provides important environmental benefits and benefits to ratepayers. And it's possible we'd come back to you for permission to add it. We're not asking for that permission now. We know that if it were added, it would be a major change that would require permission.
This is caught, something that caught my eye. It would be a major, yeah. Sam, you have anything?
So we talked about the pollin, pollinator mix, but I don't think that we really thoroughly discussed that in the previous discussions. And one question that I have is, I don't see anywhere that there's any topsoil provided for the pollinator mix to grow in.
So there is, sorry to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
There is a note within Sheet C 1.01, the Legend and General Notes. And let me just find exactly, number four, under the general notes.
Yep.
Areas disturbed, oh, I'm sorry, the, the second sheet, C 1.01, the Legend and General Notes. So under Notes and the General section, number four, areas disturbed during construction will receive six inches of Loman seed. And we can clarify that on the site plans and call that out as well.
Sorry, where was that? Number four, under, oh, under general. Got it. Okay. Okay. And the other reference from the review letter, the peer review letter, was about plantings in that 50-foot buffer, and that they're, they're carried to the south of the access road, but not to the north. And to the north, I see, looking at aerial photographs, that it's completely sand in that buffer. So there's not really any vegetation that we know of, and that, that tree inventory would tell us better what's there and confirm or deny what I saw looking at the aerials of it. So, I mean, I would, I would like to see some plantings in that buffer zone that actually serve as a buffer. So. I know that there are, there are plantings called for to the south of the road. If you look at C 2.02, but not to the north of that access road.
Can I, is it okay to provide some feedback to that question? That is correct. On, on Sheet C 2.02, just south of that existing gravel path that was mentioned, we are providing some additional plantings there in the form of some trees and some additional shrubs. And that's because the existing vegetation there is an area that's not as forested. So to provide some additional screening from the municipal maintenance lot, that's why we're providing those additional plantings there. In regards to the north side of the site, and I know there were a few discussions and a few different meetings regarding this, the areas outside of the fence line that's proposed are fairly steep, as steep as two-to-one slopes in that area. As part of the application, we did provide some existing photographs, and I can direct you to the exact page, and I can also show you. But there is some existing shrubs on that slope that we're proposing to remain. The slopes are too steep to provide new trees. They just wouldn't survive on that. And again, we're trying to minimize the amount of earthwork on the site so that we're not importing and exporting a lot of material. Another note is the vegetated, how, how the bylaw is stated is that the intent of that 50-foot buffer is to provide screening from the adjacent properties, based on the elevation difference of where the panels will sit relative to the finished grade of that existing site. Even if we were providing trees outside of the, the fence line at that bottom elevation, it really wouldn't provide any additional screening. So really, we're getting the screening and, like, from the elevation difference, correct?
Or the existing grade. Okay, understood. Thank you. Where were those photos?
They're, I can pass this to you.
Were, are they in this, not in this document?
They are in the.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Could I ask a follow-up question about the pollinator mix desired? It's on, which page is this, Sarah?
C 2.00.
2.00, just to the left of the zoning summary chart. There's a little table.
Yes.
That provides details. I remember there were some nuances about this that were of concern, and I want to make sure.
Yes.
We nailed it, or if we didn't, we get it.
Yeah, as I remember.
So there was actually a similar issue with it as it's written out here. And my, my concern about it is that 94.9% of it is, is a single, single species. And I'd like to see that broadened a little bit, because may, you may plant in a year when that specific species doesn't have ideal conditions, and it doesn't take. But if you broaden the, the variety, you're more likely, I would think, to have, be successful in propagating plants.
I thought that might have been the case, so.
Yeah.
What, do we have particular targets that would be acceptable?
We, we had provided targets, and Ms. Ebaugh had some concerns about that, I thought. We did provide targets.
From what I understood, that was the pollinator 3 mix. From my understanding, there was one previously that was provided, but then the board agreed that the pollinator 3 mix was appropriate. If there's a different.
I think that we had one that had a broader variety of species in it.
Okay, I, we'd be happy to update to reflect that.
We'll have to dig that up.
One of us can dig that up.
Okay.
No, but as I remember the discussion, we presented that mix, and it was a while ago. You came back with some thoughts and proposed an alternative, which got closer to this. And that's sort of where we left it, but I don't, I don't remember the whole, but I could dig up the solar pollinator mix.
Yeah, we'll have to do some digging to find it.
I have it. I mean, I just, I just don't have it.
Yeah, right here. Okay.
I do, but I'm not going to try and spend a few minutes.
It's really just about getting a broader variety so that there's more chance of success.
Yeah. My recollection that was, that there was some confusion about what was going to be done or required for Fairing Hill. And we said, well, whatever the preference is, we'll be happy to adopt that. But it looks as if we may not have gotten the.
And, and again, it was probably one of those things that was in flux when we transitioned the project. But I'll send, I'll dig up the final mix, because I had sent you a version, and then you sent back comments, and I think, I'll, I'll dig all that up and, and get that sent through the planning office to you guys.
Excellent, thank you.
You done?
I'm done.
Mr. Chair, can I have a regard, Ms. Ebaugh, regarding that slope, I understand why you're not. Are, are you concerned at all about needing to provide retention or support or erosion control for that slope?
It's been stabilized as the slope exists today for a few years since it's been cleared. So we don't have any concerns with sort of long-term effects on that. We can absolutely keep an eye on it, and if there's any stabilization that will be necessary, we can address it if that comes up. But again, with those, the vegetation, as noted in those existing photographs, that helps stabilize the slope as well. We just don't want to do anything to undermine it.
If it collapsed, you guys would take responsibility for mitigating that, or, because some of that's off your property, right?
I believe the excavation and the, the slopes that were created are all within the, the property.
Okay. All right, so in, in the site maintenance plan, just make an, well, we'll make a note that you'll, you'll monitor it and remediate as necessary. But we, I don't remember talking about that in the previous discussions.
It was one of the very earlier conversations, just in terms of the, the setback in the vegetation, but.
Yeah, okay.
That's it.
Yeah, it's a different document. That's why I can't find them. Thank you. Do you want this one?
Are there, are there different versions up there?
No, that's the stormwater.
This is stormwater report.
Oh, okay. It's a different document entirely.
Yeah, like. Why can't I find these?
I'm good. There were two items I wanted to address, if I might, from Mr. Cordero's peer review.
You beat me to the punch. I was actually going to invite him up to weigh in.
These are a little more legal in nature, so one, he suggests that there might be a stormwater management permit required from the Board of Health under the town's general bylaw. We looked at that bylaw, and there's an exception where that permit is not required when the project is undergoing site plan review or special permit review otherwise, which is our case, so we didn't think it would apply. I, I tried to reach out to Mr. Buckland about it, but he's, he was away.
Is that 1216.9?
No, that's in the general.
Oh, in the general.
Bylaws. Article, Division 5, Article 11, Article 1 of Article 11, Stormwater Management. But I think there's an exception for projects that need a site plan review or a special permit. My hope is that Mr. Buckland can confirm that for you. Mr. Cordero also suggests that we may need an MS4 stormwater management permit. And let's assume for the moment that that's a mere dimensional regulation that would apply to the project, notwithstanding the A and R plan freeze. But as we looked at that bylaw, it was implemented to help the town comply with its responsibilities under an EPA Massachusetts general permit for small municipal separate stormwater systems, storm sewer systems. And this project, this site, is, is not connected to the municipal separate storm sewer system, won't be, nor will runoff find its way into the storm sewer system. It goes in the other direction, as Sarah could explain if need be. So it didn't look to us as if that bylaw would apply to this project. But I understand it's a newer bylaw. The board may not have encountered projects or sought to apply it yet, so.
We can, we can look into that and get some clarification.
And Mr. Cordero thought that if that was required, it would be from the ZBA. But the bylaw actually says that if a project needs a special permit from the planning board, then the planning board is the permitting authority for that. And then I think the biggest headline in this would be that we feel that we already comply. Or if anything was necessary, it would be extremely minor modifications. The, the. The thrust of the MS-4 stormwater management bylaw is ensuring compliance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. And Sarah and her team have already done a great job trying to ensure that the project does comply with all the applicable standards from that handbook. So, I think, you know, not only do we think it doesn't apply to this sort of project that's not connected in any way to the town's MS-4 system, but we're already achieving the public policy goals.
Mike? You haven't chimed in yet.
No, I was just looking at these pictures. Are you considering the northern portion of that site? C 2-02 and 03 has existing conditions now. Because right now, they're bare. You know, you're talking about putting lume on anything that was disturbed. That was done before, so.
So, the pollinator mix will be installed at the, there's a note on C 2.03 noting that the proposed meadow mix to be installed at toe of slope and within fence line. So, on that northern side of the property, again, outside that existing vegetated slope, we will be installing the pollinator mix. So, a portion of it will, is outside the fence line and outside the development, just to reestablish some growth in that area.
Is that it, Mike?
Yeah, no, I was just concerned about that, you know. A lot of times when they say pre-existing conditions or whatever, it's a shame that it was stripped like that, but just have to check, make sure we're on the same page.
With the board's permission, I would like to invite Mr. Cordero to come up and comment on his report, just to make sure that we understand everything completely. That be all right with you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you want to spread out, Phil, you can take.
I don't buy it.
Okay.
For the record, Phil Cordero from Allen &amp; Major Associates. Happy to comment on the issues, fairly minor technical issues in the peer review, which Sarah indicated that they'll be able to respond to, so I won't walk through them to the board's discretion tonight. To the point that was raised by council regarding the applicability of the stormwater management permit and ultimately the MS-4, we can completely understand his position. We've encountered this on a number of applications based on the language of the bylaw. So, what we seek to do, what we denote for the applicants is because of the way the bylaw requires the permit, we're asking them for a response regarding whether there's an exception to it or whether they are otherwise compliant with it. So, we're not inherently disagreeing with council's assertion that it's not applicable. We would like them to document it for you, for the record. Similarly, with the MS-4, as council indicated, it is indicative of control of municipal systems and a fully functioning stormwater management system in compliance with the TEN standards can also be compliant with the MS-4. And they have a full system here. Simply documenting that and asserting that they do meet those requirements otherwise and then obviously fall under the exemption to it, I think just checks all of the boxes as part of the board's contemplation for an application.
Awesome.
Happy to answer any other questions that they have. We had the benefit of obviously a lengthy history here on the application, a lot of revisions, so our final review, which incorporated a lot of the previous elements, was relatively minor in nature.
I'm good. All right, thank you, Phil, appreciate that.
Thank you.
So.
I do have one more question. And this is something that I did not notice until earlier today. And that is a second pair of gates that actually show on C 2.03. So, that any vehicles arriving at, down the access road would go through gates to get into the northern portion, only it's not really, it's getting you into the middle portion. And then you exit that middle portion, which you can see on C 2.03, and then you have to enter another gate to get into the northern portion. So, I was wondering if the fire department has had any, one, if they're aware of that and two, if they've had any issue with it. Keep going, next page, there's another gate here and a gate here.
Excellent question.
Yep, so I can, again, our conversations with the fire department have been through a few iterations and that the gate has been shown on.
Yeah, I just wonder, I mean, I've been looking at this for a year now too or something. And I'm just noticing that, or I just noticed that earlier today. So, I'm just wondering if that's something that the fire department was aware of and are not saying, oh yeah, it looks great, being unaware of that.
No, absolutely. So, they are aware of it, I'd be happy to sort of reintroduce them to this, just to close the loop, absolutely. It was part of a discussion with the fire department. In that location, you can see that the roadway is actually 16 feet, first of all, portion. And that's in order to have that roadway fit within the confines of the 50-foot setback as well as not having any impact to the buffer zone of the adjacent wetlands. So, that's why that road is a little bit narrow at that location. And because of that, we also don't have enough room to install the fence, sort of encompassing that entire access road. So, that's why the double set of gates have been proposed, again, to make sure that everything for the array, all that is surrounded by the gated and locked fence. So, they are aware of a bit of a different fence configuration in that location.
So, I guess I would also make note that it means that for a fire truck to turn around, they've got to go through that second set of gates and go up into the northern portion to get to the turnaround and then go back out the gate of the northern portion, in the gate of the middle portion to come out of the fenced areas.
Yeah, because the hammerhead's up here.
Yeah, right, that the turnaround's all the way up in the northern portion.
Yep. If you could just ver, make sure that we get a statement from the fire department.
Yeah, and if they can explicitly refer to that issue.
Yeah, right, not a.
Makes sense.
Not a, a no, no comment or.
Yeah.
If they can address those.
We just want to know that it's not a lack of understanding of what the situation is.
Sure.
That they're approving.
Yes, no, I can absolutely reach out to him.
Something else that I saw here.
We wanted to ask for your guidance on one other small point from Mr. Cordero's peer review. He pointed out that there was a, there wasn't a certification from a landscape architect.
You read my mind.
So, the HB certified landscape architects did contribute to the overall site plan, but because of the modest nature of the landscaping, there wasn't a separate landscaping plan that would be warranted for separate certification from a landscape architect. Didn't seem to be a concern last time around. If it is, it's something we can address, we just need guidance from you.
I would think it would be easy enough to add another stamp to this drawing.
Yeah, I think it would, it would be helpful. Last time around, I think we were, we were operating on information overload and.
And we were so focused on the battery storage issue that.
Yeah. I guess my question is for you is, what is it you're hoping we accomplish tonight?
Tonight?
Yes.
We wanted to get your input on what additional information, if any, you needed from us. We've got a little homework to do, some adjustments based on Mr. Cordero's detailed comments. And landscape architect stamp. We'll get the updated pollinator mix from you, incorporate that in.
Can we talk about the 18-inch tree waiver?
Uh, sure.
So, how does that negatively affect your project?
Well.
And how come it didn't come up the first time around? Because I don't remember that discussion the first time.
I don't remember.
Yeah. Well, I don't know. I think we.
Yeah, that portion of the application did not change. And my understanding is that with solar project after solar project before this board, it's been treated the same way in applications.
Pushes out. We didn't waive it for Ferring Hill.
No.
Okay.
I'm not sure, we've had discussions about the board's ability to grant waivers to that, and I don't think the bylaw gives us the ability to waive that, so that would then become a variance. I don't know, we can, that's why I brought it up, because I understand the applicant's position and the previous applicant's position as well. I don't know exactly why that's there, other than trying to protect large trees in the habitat. However, you can't, they couldn't leave those trees up anyway.
Well, I think it.
I don't know, so I'm, I don't know.
I think that it gives us a sense of the maturity and the robustness of the existing forest that's being cleared.
Okay. So, it gives us a sense of the impact.
It's not all three-inch new saplings.
Right, yeah. Do you have a, has anyone done an inventory of the 18-inch and over trees on the property?
I don't think tree by tree, but you know, in response to Ms. Gleason's comment of a general sense of the nature of the vegetation on the site and the robustness, maybe Sarah, you can talk about what our photos may show.
Yes, so, I guess, as John mentioned, we did supply a few photos of the existing conditions and happy to provide some more, do a site walk as well. But as we're talking about the southern portion of the site, which is where the existing tree canopy is, we have notes from our site visits, from our wetland scientists and other people that have been out there, that it is fairly consistent of the pine canopy with a dense shrub layer. So, again, if it's helpful, we can provide some additional photographs of that area just to note exactly how established it is. But again, it is almost just a bit over eight acres of trees that will be cleared.
I'm pretty sure, didn't we on Ferring Hill request an inventory?
We did request it and I, we got something, I don't know how they conducted the inventory.
I think they did a, you know, if it was 40 acres, they did a two-acre parcel and then just extrapolated the findings.
Sample, they did representative samples.
Right.
Okay. All right, we can go back and research, both the applicants claimed that it has been waived in multiple instances in the past.
Yeah.
And look at what we, what we required.
Yeah, we can definitely look at that. I don't personally remember waiving it ever.
I don't.
And I don't recall ever getting, did we, did we truly get something from Ferring Hill?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not recalling that, anyway. Go on. Sorry.
It was probably 22 years ago when we got it.
Well, there is that.
I would suggest even if we've waived it in the past, it would be a good practice at this point to, to require that, because I think the loss of forest land is becoming more and more of an issue, especially with the larger solar projects. So, as a matter of sort of precedent and practice, I think.
Well, and how many, how many members of this board are, have been party to waiving it?
Waiving.
Waiving the inventory.
Like I said, I, I've been here almost six years and I don't remember doing it. I don't know, Mike, you'd know better.
Only one was Ferring Hill, the other ones were all clear-cut and mined out before they even came before us.
Right, yeah, so the work was done prior to us, yeah.
So, it wasn't really an issue, not really an issue, or not really a possible issue.
So, we'll research the fact that whether or not we have granted a waiver in the past. It would be nice, it's seven acres, it might be nice if somebody even just took a one-acre sampling and went out, measured up some trees and gave us a sense of what we're dealing with. An acre's not an enormous piece of property, I wouldn't think it would take more than half a day or so for somebody to go out there and do that. And then we can incorporate that into our next conversation. There was a request that we bring forward all the documents from the previous application.
I move that all the documentation, documents, citizens' comments, notes, minutes, be incorporated from the application, we'll get the number, insert number, be incorporated into this proceeding.
With the exception of the plans that include the battery storage.
We can, we can bring it forward, but we note that they've been superseded. Either, either way, we note that the battery, the battery storage is.
Be clear that that's.
Yeah.
I would just ask you to amend to also include the recordings of the meetings where this matter was discussed, in addition to the minutes.
The minutes, the recordings.
Documents.
Maintained by WCTV, all. And what's the proper way to say it, by reference or do we have to physically port them onto the, sorry, how would you prefer to hear that worded?
I think for purposes of this resolution, incorporate into the record of the current proceeding. And then you'll get guidance from Mr. Buckland and your council as to how to do it logistically, whether everything should be added.
Ported forward.
To the website for this project or not.
So, added to the record for this proceeding, then that's how I'll word the application. So, as mentioned, all documents, citizens' input, meeting minutes, notes, recordings be incorporated into the record.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have?
Second.
Second. Motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett, all in favor, Sherry? Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. I don't have anything else, do you? Well, do we have anybody in the room that would like to speak to this? Don't be shy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you. I have several questions. Kathy Papalardo, Ferring Hill Road.
Thank you.
In regards to the tree waiver. In the years that I've been coming to the planning board meetings, particularly with the solar projects, a point was made that the planning board does not grant waivers because prior applicants have asked for the 50-foot setback waiver, that was denied. They asked for the 18-inch tree to be waived, that was denied. And I know that 27 Charge Pond Road, 140 Tyonit Road, 150 Tyonit Road and Ferring Hill Road all had to have tree inventory and the 18-inch acknowledged. And the three make-piece projects also came up with the sum of how much value the lumber was. So, those I know off the top of my head.
And I remember those as well.
Okay. I'm backing you up. In regards to the acreage cleared, it was stated 8.1 acres of tree clearing. Was that just for the solar or is that also including the clearing for the roads, the concrete pads, the fencing, the landscaping that's to go around the project? What's the total acreage?
The 8.1 includes all, it's not just for the panels, it includes the clearing for the road, it's total.
It includes the roads?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And the site, because it does have slopes, how? And the site, because it does have slopes, how much grading is going to be done on that site?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but to the best of my recollection, there is no additional grading, other than just smoothing out, I think, some stockpiles that are there. The banks that you see and whatnot are going to stay just like they are.
So, when the trees are cut down and all of the roots are pulled out of the ground, the stumps?
They would have to smooth it out and grade it to put the panels in place, I would assume.
Correct.
And then when the loam and the seed mix is going to be tended and not just left alone? So, it actually sprouts? Remember, we had a drought last summer. This summer, seed would just wash away.
Right.
And the concrete pads, you stated three concrete pads for the transformers. Whereabouts on the plan are they? I couldn't find them.
C two and two.
I can come around and come and point them. There's two of them. And one on C two and one...
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to ask that when you look into what the previous protocol has been with the waiver for the tree inventory, that you also, that we also find out whether that, if there were waivers, or, no, actually, if there were not waivers, if there was some relief provided that only a sample area had to be inventoried on previous projects, or if the whole area subject to tree clearing had to be inventoried?
Well, like I said, I don't believe we've ever granted a way, a request to get relief from the eighteen-inch tree situation. But on Ferring Hill specifically, they were the one that did the inventory, and they took X number of acres, so, because it's a forty-seven-acre parcel. So, they asked if we could narrow it down to take a portion of it and then use that to extrapolate it out.
And did we, did we agree to that, or...
We did. I remember that. It's in there.
That application has not been approved.
Correct.
Right.
But they did do it.
Right.
Yeah. We agreed to allow them to take a sample as opposed to the whole property. That's all we agreed to.
I would like to look at that, because I'm not, it's been a while, so...
Been a long time.
And this brain is not quite as good a memory as it used to be.
And, you know, whether or not it changes us' position on granting relief from the eighteen-inch rule...
Right.
Is really kind of irrelevant. But it would be nice to get a, kind of a flavor for what's out there.
A feel for what, yeah. Yes, thank you.
Is there any other... Okay, if you could introduce yourself, Barry?
Good evening. Barry Cosgrove, Blackmore Pond.
Put the volume up.
Can you hear me okay?
It's a little bit weak. If you could speak kind of forcefully, that would be helpful.
Is this better?
Little bit.
Okay. Thank you very much for your service to our town, Barry Cosgrove, Blackmore Pond. Permission to speak for the three dozen members of the Zero Route Twenty-Five opposition. Just a few housekeeping matters. Very helpful to have the information presented so far. Thank you very much. On the issue of the special permit, unlike the applicant who's in the on-deck circle tonight, there's no special permit application that's actually been submitted by this body. And under Chapter One-Forty, Section Nine, it does make clear that if you're looking for a special permit, you do have to file the permit application. Additionally, it would seem consistent with your conversation that it would be appropriate to treat everybody the same. The next, the next applicant filled the application out. It would be something I think you may want to consider discussing with your counsel. Additionally, on the notice of this meeting, there's no mention of special permit, and I think you may want to talk to your counsel about whether or not you need to renotice stuff, just to clean that up.
We cleaned up when I wrote it, Mr. Cosgrove.
I'm sorry?
We, we cleaned that up when I read it into the record and verified with the applicant sitting in front of us that we were acting on a site plan review and special permit. So, I understand that. But as far as all parties involved, I think we've, we've touched on that subject.
Okay, just, just trying to be helpful and clear. To borrow from Member Quirk's comment months and months ago, the question that was raised was whether or not the applicant fully agrees with that, and whether or not they would determine that to be a basis of an appeal for improper application. It seems to me that may be something you may want to consider asking.
Whether, I don't understand. Could you clarify?
So, it's one, yeah, so it's one thing, it seems to me it's one thing for an applicant to say, "I understand that that's your policy and your procedure." It's another thing for them to say, "We agree with it, and we will not appeal that."
Well...
And I'm asking the question whether you think it's a good idea to go to that second step.
Well, we did, we did quite clearly state with the applicant in front of us that we were acting on a site plan review and a special permit, and did they understand that, and they agreed to that, unless I'm mistaken?
Yeah, and if I might, I have a copy of the notice of public hearing that the town sent out, and it talks about site plan review special permit.
Right. So, you, you are fully conscious of the fact that we are working on a site plan review special permit, and that you agree with the proceeding under that presumption?
Fully sentient, yes.
Okay. So, we've got that one covered, Mr. Cosgrove.
Thank you very much. If helpful on this incorporation by reference, that was really helpful discussion as well. Just let us know if we need to, you know, send a letter to planning and ask them to move everything over or not. We'd be grateful, just so we comply with whatever administrative step you guys decide you want there. We certainly don't want to repeat things any more than you do. On the issue of the trees, I think there's three points that are worthy of mention here. The first is, you know, many times during this proceeding, people have incorrectly said it's a great site because it's already cleared. We can see now it's eight more acres. On the sampling, I think you'd have to agree that, you know, excuse the pun, but, you know, you could easily do some cherry picking by sampling only one acre. And there could be financial implications, because some other towns have conditioned tree removal in solar projects by allowing the town to economically benefit from the sale of those trees. And understanding the volume of those trees could have an implication on that. Another housekeeping matter. At one point during the previous application proceeding, a question was raised of whether or not this site is on the sole-source aquifer. And through you, Mr. Chairman, I would ask, is there anybody on the board who disagrees that this site is over the sole-source aquifer?
That, that subject has been addressed several times in public meetings and is in the record, which we've already agreed to bring forward, so I really don't want to head back down that path. There's no need for it.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to take that to be that the question asked by Mr. Schultz, he's satisfied himself that it is. On the substantive matters, just a couple of points. The, the question remains of whether or not it would be advisable for the town to do a comprehensive hydrology study here, separate and distinct from the groundwater runoff study that's been done. And we continue to urge your consideration of that. On the surety bond that, that has been proposed, excuse me, on the decommissioning numbers that have been proposed, the numbers appear to be in AC, and the NREL standard is it'd be in DC. And if your goal is to comply with the NREL standards, DC, not AC, would be your metric. And on the surety bond form, the form that was attached to the application is substantially out of what would be considered best in class. I wonder, I don't know if your peer reviewer could be helpful here. We've certainly submitted some examples to the town. It's in the town, in the landlord's best interest, I think, that they have a contemporary, sophisticated policy form, and urge that you take a look at that. And also liability insurance. Talked about this a little bit, but remember, a decommissioning bond doesn't protect the town from liability. And so, those would be our comments at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to weigh in tonight?
Mr. Chair, may I ask?
Yes.
Mr. Cosgrove, you referenced the NREL study and talked about the numbers being stated in terms of DC versus AC. Can you, can you remind me of where that information is and give me a site on it? It's been a little while since I looked at that.
Happy to do so. It's actually not in the study, but if you call the phone number of the gentleman who wrote it, as we do, he'll confirm to you that that's what they use as a metric. I'm happy to provide his name and phone number to you.
If you could do that, that'd be great.
Will do.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Cosgrove. Mr. Cosgrove, in the last proceeding, I believe you raised concerns about notice. Are you satisfied for this application that notice was properly given?
Well, I've looked at the notices that were in the newspaper.
No, no, I was talking about a butter notices. I'm sorry.
I beg your pardon. Thank you. Actually, that issue was originally raised by your legacy peer reviewer. And his argument, or question was, when, when he drew three hundred feet to several houses, some of the houses, but not all of the houses, had been notified. I don't know whether or not this time around, the clerk's office did it the same way or differently, but it may be worthy of asking the question. His point was they simply missed some houses. They skipped a couple. I don't know if that's true this time around or not.
Okay, I just remembered that you brought it up. Could you double-check?
If I, yeah, if I may. I can also forward an email I've had with the assessor's department. As you know, the assessor's department provides us with the abutters list that's included. The abutters list actually, as part of the application, should have a few markups.
They're in there, yeah.
Explaining it. It's based off the tax maps, so there are a few lots that are under common ownership. So, it was just sent out as one notice instead of two notices to the same owner.
Could you, could you send something to us that states that? And then we'll, we'll just close that off, then.
Sure, I can forward you the conversation with the assessors, and then, again, I just want to make sure that the abutters list that was provided as part of the application has those comments as well.
Thank you.
We also provided that in our responses to Mr. Rowley's comments last time around.
I remember it as an issue, I just couldn't remember that, how we resolved it. I just didn't want to have that hanging over us yet again.
Well, and we should probably confirm which map was used and probably do a little careful review of, I've run into an issue with this just recently, where the property that was putting in a new septic system, the number was on the GIS map across the road in a marsh. And my family actually had abutting land, and we never got notified, because it showed up as being across the road with a different abutter. So, and that was based on the GIS map.
Are you suggesting that a government map was wrong?
I am.
I'm appalled.
Imagine that.
I'm appalled.
I do, I do believe that the, both the board and, and we are protected by reliance on the certified abutters list from the assessor's office.
Yep, okay.
All right, I just didn't want to, I remembered that was an open issue when Barry was there, so I thought I'd ask him.
Okay. We have one more. Okay.
Good evening. Yes. No, this is Nancy McHale. Excuse me, I'm using Kathy's laptop. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person this evening, but I appreciate you taking my, the call. I have a question about the consultant doing a peer review and not actually doing a site visit. And that's concerning, because there was a comment saying that he couldn't determine if there was a depression or a hill at the, the tree line, and it certainly would seem to make a difference. Also, the fact that you can look at the numbers on a map and, on a site plan, but don't get the magnitude of the space and where the, the actual field of solar array is going to be relative to the municipal maintenance barn and what's up there, should that hill decide that it's not going to be stable anymore. So, it would seem to me that a site plan would cer, a site visit would certainly be in order, and also to take a really good look at the existing solar fields that are in that area, and think about what the cumulative effect is on that neighborhood as well. And I know that we've talked about the aquifer a number of times, and to that point, it appears that there was only one test pit done or tested. It certainly would seem that on a property this large, there should, with questions about the aquifer, there should be more than one or even two test pits done. So, thank you very much. I appreciate you taking my comments.
Thank you. So, I think we got some, I think we got some accomplishment done tonight. You've got your homework. We have a little bit of our own. With nobody else looking to weigh in and no more comments from the board, I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to October ninth. Does that give you enough time? That's the only meeting we have scheduled in October, so just keep that in mind.
Okay. Is there a earlier meeting? Because we're going to be ready, actually, sooner.
Unfortunately, we have an off-cycle meeting on the eighteenth. That's, that's hands-off, because that's for zoning articles to prepare for town meeting. And then we have, we've already got four items scheduled for the twenty-fifth, which is the next. So, unfortunately, there really isn't an available meeting before that. So, it would be October nine, or we would be looking at November thirteen.
What's, what's the alternative date to the ninth?
November thirteen is the next scheduled meeting. Because October twenty-fourth, or twenty-third, which would be our normal second meeting of the month, is our town meeting. So, we won't be meeting that night.
October ninth is Columbus Day?
It is. Very observant.
Are you having the meeting?
Volunteers don't take holidays. To the best of my knowledge, because Sonia and Ken were both asking me what was being scheduled for that night.
I think we're bringing battery storage back that night.
That night, yep.
Sonia did ask me, mentioned to you about, are we going to have additional meetings in October?
Well, I, I never make those decisions without the board present.
Well, that's why I...
So, I mean, if the board is open to an off-cycle meeting, I'm fine with that. So, I mean, if the board is open to an off-cycle meeting, I'm, I'm fine with that. I have, I have no life Mondays wide open.
I'm good.
Sherry?
I'm generally okay as well.
Mike?
I'm flexible.
Jane?
I'm okay.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have, oh, we could do it on the 16th, National Bosses' Day. So we would have the 16th or the 30th available.
October 16th and 30th.
October 16th?
Yes.
So if October 16th is the earliest date, we'll make it work.
That'll work for you? Okay. October 16th it is. Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for 11-23, Wareham PV1 LLC Site Plan Review Special Permit, 0 Route 25 to the off-cycle meeting for the Wareham Planning Board of October 16, 2023.
So move.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Sherri Quirk. All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. We'll see you then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, for public hearings, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for 12-, okay. Notice to, notice for public hearing. Wareham Planning Board will hold the public hearing on September 11, 2023 at 6:00 PM in Room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571 to consider petition 12-23 for a site plan review and special permit from the requirements of Table 320, Article 5, Section 590, and Article 15 of the Wareham Zoning Bylaws to 370 County Road LLC Care of Prime Engineering Incorporated of 350 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass. 02347, proposing a ground-mounted photovoltaic solar array located at 370 County Road Assessor's Map 64, Lots 1006, 1008, 1009, 1010, and Map 65, Lots 1000A, 1000B, and 1001 in the R60 zoning district. Read for you by your chairman, me.
So move.
We have a second. We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. Stroll in favor? Sherri?
I have a question. Do we have a complete application in front of us?
Some of the questions I raised about that were really based on my assumption that we could, we could compare the application to the new bylaw, which we really won't know until next week. Sherry move forward. Well, we have the same problem with the previous application, so I'm not sure. I, I think we can, I, I think we can assume that this application is as complete as any other application.
I'm starting to have a little trouble here.
No, I'm, I'm waffling. All, all of my concerns about the application completeness, as I said, were based on the new standards. And I don't think we can apply that until next week. Then, then I guess we go back and, and revisit.
Well, you know, I, I will vote on this with the understanding that we've got more work to do to make sure that we have what we need in front of us to proceed. I'll vote aye on that basis.
Mike?
We're voting on opening the public hearing.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Stroll?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Hello, my name is Aaron Reden. I'm with Prime Engineering, representing 370 County Road LLC. It is proposed to lease the land from Stoll &amp; Tree Farm, Patricia Zimmer and Ellen Arju. I believe right now that the lease was just signed, so we have, I don't have that information yet, but I will supply it as I get it. I just want to initially say, the main purpose of us being here today is to present the project and receive as many comments as we can. And, you know, we, we do have many comments, both from, both from Ellen and Major Associates, from the fire department that we have to address, and, and obviously, anything from the public and the planning board. So we're under the assumption that we're going to keep coming back. So, right now, it is a wooded area. It is proposed to clear a total of 9.67 acres. It is proposed to utilize the existing dirt pathways that, that were utilized as a cranberry bog farmer. So we plan on utilizing those roadways and improving the roadways closer to the, to the solar fields themselves. To the north, we have an existing solar array. To the east, we have a, it's, it's subdivided, but it's currently wooded land. I talked to Mr. Buckland before regarding that information, regarding that subdivision, and he clarified that it was a field subdivision. They have to go in front of the board again. But as of right now, it is a, is just a wooded lot, lots. To the south, there are cranberry bogs, and to the south of that, there are a few residential dwellings. To the west, I believe on the Marion Line, there is residential dwellings as well. The, in the, the entryway on County Road is by the existing dwelling. So we plan on utilizing the existing driveway and going through that, through there to, to get access to our proposed solar fields, which are two solar fields. I went from County Road out, so the proposed solar array, number one, is a, is a 2.76-acre clearing, but that is the total clearing. And, and then as you, this whole area is a wetland, and I believe this area is a wetland. It's wetland, but I believe it's, was utilized as cranberry bogs. And then as you pass the access road, you get to the, the larger of the two proposed solar arrays, which the total clearing would be 7.14 acres. So the, the general slope is going towards the middle wetlands. It slopes downward, and it is on a high, it's set higher than the abutting properties, at least for the, the solar array, the first solar array. The, I went out to do a site walk initially, and I took photos that are accompanied in the, in the narrative. We received comments that, you know, you don't know where the photo is taken, so I plan on going out again to take better photos. I plan on going 50 feet off of the property line and taking photos facing outward to get a sense of, a sense of the, the natural buffer. And I'll report back and we'll see, you know, what we have to do after that. I'm assuming we're going to have to add some low-laying vegetation, because these are pine trees, so they can go up to, I think it's 70 feet. So, and they're relatively bare on the bottom of the tree, or the base of the tree. So it is proposed to clear the trees. Obviously, we have to cut grub, and it, that alone is significant amount of earthwork in itself. And as we do the earthwork, it is proposed to do some grading and alterations to more so mitigate the stormwater runoff that is on-site in, so to, to direct the stormwater into the proposed detention basin and retention basin. The, on the second, sorry, I'm just going to flip the page. On the first detention basin, no. Just going to skip a few pages. So this is just one of the site grading plans. As you can see, there is a detention basin. We, we received comments for the detention basin. I agree with the comments. We plan on revising accordingly. I will briefly go over the comments we received from Ellen and Major. So this is more so adjusting the slope to adjust the speed of the flow that's going into the basin. So that, that's mostly the earthwork here is more so making the slope less on certain areas. There is a proposed concrete pad. We are planning on having battery storage there with the transformer. And we plan on having a secondary containment area, which is primarily what's utilized for, for, you, you would typically see them in, in places that might have like oil substance or something like that. So then it would catch a certain amount of the storage liquid, and by that time, a response can take place, and, you know, the, whoever's in ownership of the, of the solar field would be notified through their telemetry, and they would go out and make those.
How big, how big is the containment vessel?
Um, I believe I, I calced out how much the batteries themselves are. I, I have them somewhere. It's approximately one and a half times whatever the battery capacity is. I'll, I'll write that in the narrative more.
Well, you, you may want to, just to save yourself some back and forth, you may want to review some of the recordings.
Okay.
From the applicant that just left.
Okay.
Because battery storage, potential events, the ability to control any water that may be used to put the batteries out if they do catch fire.
I understand.
Is all very, very detailed in those meetings.
Okay.
And it's going to save you a lot of time.
Okay, thank you. I'll definitely take a look at that before the next meeting. So it is proposed to have a secondary containment area. We will review the previous file, and we'll get back to that. Moving on to... This is the, just the entrance of the site. So this is a paved road that goes up. It's a driveway, so it's a paved drive. And it will be proposed to put on the stabilization for more rumble pads over prep for a construction entrance prior to the, prior to the paved path, because it goes from paved to dirt. I will include that in the plan, because I do not see that. And then this is just to show the proposed pole farm. And, and then within the 50-feet, 50-foot buffer, it's proposed to have a, a raised utility pole.
Who owns that driveway?
Excuse me?
Who owns that driveway? Not the driveway, it's just.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's owned by...
Not the applicant.
It's owned by the property owner, not, not the applicant, because the applicant's just leasing the property. So I, I believe it's owned by either Stoll &amp; Tree Farm Trust or Ellen Arju, which it, for, it's a bunch of different entities, but it's the same family. So this is the second, the second solar array. It was assumed that we would need some sort of access road inside, so it was graded as such. So the stormwater that runs off will get picked up by some swales and be brought down to the southern retention pond. There was a comment regarding the detention bond, it needs an outlet. I believe we were initially just expecting it to retain the, the little bit of water that goes into it, just because of, because of the soil types. But we will review that in greater detail. And then to the south, there is the, the second unproposed concrete pad with the inverter and battery. And there is in a butter that uses, there's a current access road. The butter utilizes that, so we are planning on pretty much making the path go around rather than through now, so we can still get access to his property. Yeah, I think that's all I have for now, but I just want to quickly go over, if it's okay with that, the, the comments. Okay. So comment, comment one states, I'm not, I'm just going to paraphrase it. There's a floodplain overlay district, and I want clarification if we go, are actually commencing work within the flood zone. I believe we are for the utility pole risers in order to bring the, the electricity across the wetland area. So we, we're not actually proposed to dig trenches for that electric, the electrical line, but rather a riser. Apply for the stormwater management permit. I haven't looked into that in detail, but I will review it and we'll get back to the planning board. Mentioned a TSS in total phosphorus removal. I, I plan on doing a write-up for that, because I feel like the secondary containment area would contain any TSS, but there will be a write-up for that. We do have a PLS on this project. They did not stamp the plan for the property line determination, but that is in the process. We will revise the FEMA flood zone maps. And as I stated earlier, we'll provide documentation for the photos for the 50-foot setback and out, just to show the board what, what the typical coverage would be, and then we can go from there. Notes eight through 16 are pertaining to the stormwater report and the BMPs that are implemented. Those are pretty straightforward, I believe. We'll make those changes. Those, that shouldn't be too much of an issue. Though, those are pretty straightforward, I believe. We'll make those changes. Those, that, that shouldn't be too much of an issue. Note seventeen, we plan on providing a soil test. I plan on going out to the site and perform three, three test pits per basin to determine the groundwater elevation and the soil types, just to confirm with the USDA soil maps. We received comments from the fire department and we plan on incorporating them in their plans. Mostly it was, we, we didn't provide a sweat model and we didn't provide enough to, to turn around. So we plan on utilize, we plan on addressing those comments. And then we will also include signage and details and notations in the plan set for high voltage and warning signs and whatnot. Are there any questions? Yes?
I'm, I'm gonna go back to the statement I made earlier, the suggestion. I, listening to your presentation and what I can see right off of the bat is missing and whatnot. I would heavily suggest reviewing as many of the planning board meetings concerning solar arrays in this town as you possibly can to give you some background on what the board looks for in a project, what our concerns would be.
Okay.
I think it's gonna save you and the proponent a ton of time and money.
Okay.
Aside from stating that, the decommissioning bond, I mean, that, that, we might as well just address the elephant in the room right out of the gate.
Okay.
So it, it's the board's position that we follow the NREL decommissioning guideline. And to come in with a proposed decommissioning bond that is not even a quarter of what we would be looking for is, is really not a good way to get started. So I, I would absolutely put that at the top of your list as well.
Okay.
Were, were you provided that document when you submitted the application?
No.
The planning office has been requested to provide applicants with that information, so we should make sure the planning office gets him...
Gets a copy of that, or you stop in and see Sonia and ask her for a copy, or email and she can email it to you.
Yes.
Again, it'll, it'll save you a lot of unnecessary time here before us where you, you know what, where the standards are.
Okay.
So you can come in prepared.
Okay.
I didn't see an access road all the way around the array for the fire department.
No, that, that wasn't included yet. We, we just received, or we received words about a, a week after we submitted to the planning board on what the comments were from the fire department.
Yep.
And rather than, I, I just wanted to receive everybody's comments, both from the, um, the conservation commission and the planning board before I, you know, in case there was any, um, in, any misinformation on my part, just so I have everything.
No, it, it makes sense to get, get a, a, a feel for what it is that the town's gonna expect in the design. So, like I said, so you don't have to come back and forth and redraw it ten times and then spend lots of money needlessly. And then I saw on the application, the, the request for a waiver for the eighteen-inch tree.
We, we are actually in the middle of having a forestry report, so I'll include the eighteen-inch diameter in that report. I guess my question for you is, would you want each individual eighteen-inch tree depicted on the plan? Or would you, or would you like an inventory?
I think if we could see, see it, I, I'd like to see it on the plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that'd give us a better idea. And then looking, for me anyway, looking at the access road into the property and, and where you plan on clearing that, that front array.
Yes.
How, how are you gonna screen that from county road? I mean, you're, you're, you got a cranberry bog, which obviously has no buffer whatsoever. I mean, I, I could see that being a heck of a challenge. So just, we take screening very seriously. So, again, another, just fun fact, if you wanna call it that.
Okay.
Just to save yourself some gray hair.
Can I add something that is not something that might've been discussed on any of the other projects? And it's just a graphics question. This is a pretty complicated site. And it would sure be helpful to me anyway, being visually oriented, to see on the overs, overall plans where the blowups are. Just outline of what the blowups are.
Yes.
Would be really helpful. Thank you.
Just a couple of comments, mostly on the decommissioning plan. And then I'll have a lot of comments depending on what happens with our solar bylaw.
Okay.
But you mentioned the major components of the project. You don't list batteries as a major component. Please be aware, as far as this board is concerned, batteries are major components.
Okay.
Your decommissioning plan doesn't have a cost removal of batteries. The NREL standard has a particular cost for decommissioning batteries.
Okay.
That was one comment. Most of my other comments are, you don't really address natural heritage, endangered species. You said not relevant, but you didn't really...
I forgot that. So we did reach out to natural heritage and they said it's not in their atlas, so it's not part of... I do have an email documentation, so I will supply that as well.
So natural heritage, endangered species. I'd be interested to see when you talk to conservation commission, if this area is considered a wetlands resource area. I know you're carving out non-wetlands areas in the middle of an overall wetlands area, but it seems to me that like this is a wetlands resource area and we don't like to see solar in these areas at all.
Okay.
I, well, you'll have to see what the, are these going to be solar over cranberry bogs? No. No.
Okay.
So that's, that's not an issue and you're not gonna be part of the SMART program?
I do not have that information.
Okay. All right. So look at endangered species, look at natural, you said you had natural heritage. Screening, I think the screening plan was, was difficult to interpret. And as Mike said, I don't know how you're gonna screen from county road. And you have to screen from all those lots as they're buildable lots.
Yes, I understand.
Yeah. There's a lot more work to do on this plan, I guess.
Way too early.
Yeah. Did you submit fourteen copies of the plan to the planning board?
I don't know that information.
That was part of the, I, I guess we could've gone back and been real picky about the, uh,
Yeah, the application, yeah, because there's only, there's only one.
There's only one copy for us. There's electronic copies, but...
Yeah, okay.
But the, the bylaws is fourteen copies.
I'll be sure that there's fourteen copies next time.
Okay, thanks. Well, wait till you do your updates.
Of course, yeah.
Sherry wants to jump in, so I, I...
I just, I, I wanted to raise a question, which is, given where this project and its component parts are situated and potential water flows, do, is this a situation where we might need a hydrogeological study?
I, I think that's...
And I guess, you know, advice from, from Phil would be good, but it looks like that might be a good idea.
Yeah, I need to go back and look at where this lays over the aquifer. As we know, the aquifer is a, a concern. I didn't try and position it. I didn't get, I didn't see a locust map. That was one of the things I didn't see.
I believe it was in the narrative under one of the appendices.
Okay. All right, Mr. Darryl wants to...
Oh, I, I was just, uh, member Cork's comment regarding a hydro geo study is not, not a bad idea here considering where everything is going. It is something that we touched upon with the conservation commission as well. So if that's sort of the board's pleasure, we can establish some general outlines as to what that study would entail because it's very important to this area.
Mm-hmm. Right.
For sure.
And in your, uh, do you know off the top of your head its relation to the aquifer?
Not off the top of my head. I wouldn't want to misspeak to that.
And the wellhead protections, so I don't think it's near the wellhead protection zones, but...
I, I wouldn't think so. I don't know for sure, but Mike, you raised a question about buffers with the wetlands and whether it infringes on them.
Some of them things look like they cross a lot of lines in here because I know, know that property pretty well. There's quite a bit of upland in there. And I didn't think you was gonna be able to carve enough hot upland out of here. Ancient ways. Is there any existing in there?
So we, the, where we do cross, there, there is a two-hundred-foot riverfront area. We are crossing the, um, the fifty-foot buffer, which is the no-touch zone. But we plan on utilizing existing roadways and then we're, I mean, we, we do have to do some sort of disturbance. But we are going in front of the conservation commission. I went in front of them last week. And they, from, from my point of view, they did not seem to, that they seemed dementable to using existing features, but I don't wanna speak for them, obviously.
So they had it really weighed in officially?
Mike's question was about ancient ways, which the conservation commission wouldn't have hooked up.
About, excuse me?
Ancient ways. This, it's, it's historic trails used by indigenous peoples.
Okay, I see. I, I don't have that information, I'm sorry.
That's, you have to, that's a thing you can get, so...
Okay.
Because, uh, but, butting that waterway in the back, there's a lot of endangered species in there. River otters.
Turtles.
Uh, box turtles all over the place in here.
Yeah, what about the terror, or the red, the red turtle?
Red tals?
Yeah.
Or did ya?
Yeah, so that's, we need all of that.
They, they, we received, um... Give me one moment. So regarding, um, natural heritage, they, they did a MESA project review checklist for the Massachusetts Natural Heritage Atlas and the Massachusetts Endangered Species Act regulations. And they, they stated that it's not within the atlas, so they are not going to comment on it. I, I have the letter from natural heritage, the endangered species review assistant. I, I can supply that through email and I can just,
Yeah.
I can just give you the letter if you want.
We'll submit that to the planning office, yeah.
Okay, I will.
While we're just generally discussing your batteries, are they behind the meter? Or are they, are you gonna be taking power off the grid to charge the batteries?
I don't know that information.
That's critical piece of information.
We'll be looking for that as well.
Okay.
Is there, is there a member of your team that has carnal knowledge of the design? Because it might be helpful to have them sitting next to you the next time.
Okay, I'll, I'll definitely rope one of them in.
Yeah. Because the questions are only, it's like going to school. The questions are only gonna get tougher.
Okay, I, I honestly, I don't, I'm not an electrical engineer or anything like that. I'm a civil engineer, so I, I wouldn't wanna speak on that behalf if I don't have that information, that's all. Okay.
Did, you said you met with Mr. Buckland and went over the application with him?
We talked over the phone.
Oh, so you didn't really sit down and have a...
I didn't come in person, no.
You didn't have a pre, a pre-application review?
Um, no.
Which the bylaws do suggest.
Okay.
Yeah. I would, I would definitely schedule some time with Ken.
Okay.
With the engineer on the project. Just so that, and, and if you wanna, I mean, you can request one of the board to, to kinda help you kinda find your way through this.
Okay.
Because I forget who it was that said it, but, you know, honestly, there's a lot more work.
There's a lot of work. I understand that.
There's a lot of work that needs to be done here. This is very, very, very far away from being a plan that we would even consider looking at in depth.
Okay.
Because there's a ton of information missing.
Okay.
So, you know, we don't wanna discourage you, but I, I hate to see you come, I mean, even, even with a project that had, you know, a full-blown law firm behind it, a full-blown engineering firm behind it, they were, what, a year plus?
Two, two years.
Two years, I mean, so...
Most of these applications go two years.
Yeah, so I hate to see them tossed to the wolves, as it were. You know, it'd be nice if you were well armed with, you know, the people who can answer the questions that are going to be asked.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mike, this is a public hearing. What would we continue this to? January, February?
I, yeah, I mean, he's got some fair amount of homework to do.
Can we go back, I'm not sure Ken's on here again, to say perhaps the application isn't ready for, for review and...
I'm sorry, could we perhaps go back and say the application is not ready for review? Or, I mean, we certainly...
Well, I, I think that's kinda what Sam was alluding to.
Yeah, but once the public hearings open, there's a clock. If we, depending on...
Well, if we can, if we ask for a meeting in January and, and the proponent agrees to it.
Then we get, we get the additional time.
Then, then we're okay.
Right.
Right. And I think that's the route we would take tonight.
So how much time do you think you need to be ready for the next round of reviews?
Based off these comments, um, I guess my, my question is, could we postpone to November? And then if we need to, can we continue again?
We can continue, that's why I said some of these things go for two years because we keep trying to improve the project.
November wouldn't be wise.
Yeah, I don't think you've got enough time to prepare, quite honestly. I, I, I mean...
But could we see where we are at that point and then...
We can, but here's my concern.
Okay.
We only have so many slots in, in a planning board meeting.
Okay.
And we only meet twice a month.
Okay.
So I would hate, not that I would ever say no, but I would hate to, to, to block off one of those slots in one of those meetings, only to have you realize how much work you have to do.
I understand.
And two days before the meeting, you ask for a continuance because now we've screwed somebody out of that slot.
Yeah. Okay.
So, I mean, honestly, based on our experience with solar projects and the depth and the quality of information that we demand to make sure that we're acting appropriately, I, I think, I think Sam's kind of on target. I'm thinking the fir, after the first of the year. You do have a fair amount of work to do.
Lot of work.
Well, and, and it also depends on what happens with the, the solar, the solar bylaw.
With the solar bylaw too. So, I mean, that was strictly a suggestion. It, it's obviously something that, you know, you can decide against, but that, that would be our, our suggestion, I think.
And, and we do recommend you sit down with the planning office and...
Okay.
Yeah. And watch all those videos. It's gonna take you months to go through all of those videos. There's a lot of information there and it's all good.
Just try to save your time.
Right.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
It, it's gonna be between questions that the board has, questions that the public has, concerns on both parties. There's a lot of information to absorb in those meetings.
Okay.
That's really gonna help you prepare a project that's worthy of, of discussing in, you know, in detail and...
Yeah, long-term, it's gonna save him a lot of time.
It'll save you, well, I mean, if you're the one drawing the plans, you, you'll be happy because you, you draw ten, ten variations. But the proponent's not gonna be happy every time they get a bill because you have to redraw the plan again and again.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
So, um, just, you know, we don't, we don't wanna discourage anybody, but we do wanna make sure that you're prepared.
Try to help.
Right. So that, that would be my suggestions, January. Second meeting in January.
That's my recommendation.
I didn't bring my twenty-twenty-four planner with me.
I have a calendar in the back, just...
Like, what, you want the second Monday in January is the eighth? January first is a Monday, so the second...
Yep. So, would you, would you be amenable to planning out to January 8th for our next...
Yes, I would be.
Okay. And January 8th it is, and you're the first one on the list.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, so you wanna bring your introduces, because we're gonna have questions about the interconnect agreement.
Okay.
About the Plymouth study, although you did mention some things in the application, but there's nobody to ask questions of.
And being a public hearing, I am gonna open it up to the public if there's somebody that wants to speak to this.
And I, oh, Eric's gonna come up. But I do wanna say, if you sit down in the planning office and you want someone from the planning board to come and provide input, we, I think one of us could do that.
At least one of us is always willing and happy.
Okay.
To make sure that you, you get what you need to be prepared.
Thank you, sir. Not one more, Eric.
I said they were gonna share.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mike said zoning board, ZBA. This is the first time I've seen that. Yes, sir.
Eric Lintola, 15 Squirrel Island Road, West Carolina. Yeah, we're at the beginning, that's for sure. I'm very familiar with this site also. I actually hiked this place very often. And right off the bat, I just, it's still all about the site. This is a crazy site to put a solar, if you ask me. But nonetheless, there's wetlands, there's creeps. If you notice in the upper...
Same, oh, sorry.
In the upper corner here, it looks like a sand pit. It's a major depression. And his, the west side, his solar project, the long one, comes right up against that, pretty, very close. That's a major depression, and the tree line around that is just, everything just keeps caving in over there. It'd be an area of concern, for sure, to look at, because that north end of that will come very close, and there will be a ridge through there. That erosion, I would think, would be a problem, so that spot. Besides the wetlands, I did tune into the conservation meeting that he presented this past week, and I know they had some real issues about the wetlands and that. There's the Cohackett Brook that goes just south of it, that goes into the Sippican, and it also goes to the northeast and probably one of the largest blue- haired rookeries that I know of out here. There's an incredible sight. So, we're talking about if there ever was a catastrophic event of where, we're talking about water movement down an incline into the Cohackett Brook, which will move along. So, there's that whole thing about the battery fires that still come back to me. Just, I'm just gonna, since we are early at this, I'm just gonna kinda go through a few things that hit me in the narrative. As you can see, too, it's treed. I mean, this thing is a major forest, and it has vegetation. And the comment in here that, there was a comment about that it needed a meadow-like thing. I found a little absurd for the wildlife. I mean, you've got the woods already there, everything is in place. I don't know what else you would, the wildlife would need on that. Cutting down, again, acres of prime forest is just a little, a little too much. Impact statements, where it talks about town services 8.1, or about schools, sewer service, water system, parks, fire protection. The project is not projected to have any impact on the town's fire protection system, it's noted. Access for emergency vehicles, I'm sure, will be addressed, but the issues of battery fires is a whole nother matter. The ecology, as stated in the report, the ecology of the area. The area is a broad diversity of natural features, including upland, woodland, swamps, ponds, streams, rivers, and bogs that compromise wildlife corridors. That seems to be an admission to the wildlife that is present. It states that there is no project negative, there's no projected negative impact to the ecology of the area for the proposed development. I don't see how one can agree with that statement. The wildlife corridor, there's, I mean, the... In the environmental consulting statement, November 9, 2021, report from Karen Environmental Consulting that was requested and dealing with observations of soils, of plant communities, and hydrology. He mentions in here, boy, there's all kinds of species in here. And he does mention even though, with all of the trees, everything, that there definitely is a habitat for a lot of wildlife. And he states that the Mass GIS online viewer does not show any estimated high priority habitat areas. We see that all the time in every proposal. It is not designated on the Mass site as a high priority. But there is a lot of wildlife there, just as it is in Farring Hill and all the, et cetera, areas. The last thing, under the Permanent Stormwater Operations Maintenance Program, prepared by prime engineering Lakeville. Excellent review of 0.4 spill prevention and responsive plan. I presume that's during the construction phase? Hazardous waste, oil, and all that that you mentioned in the report?
Yes.
Okay. That's why I figure, I'm glad it's not after the, after it's done. But he goes, it goes into great explanation of what they would do to prevent any hazardous materials and oil on the site during the construction. They go into a great deal about that. And it's, and I went, something that kinda stood out, it would, in case of a spill, you'd have to provide, a minor spill, a quarter of a gallon. You would have to provide information on that type of material spilled, the location of the spill, the quantity of the spill, the time of the spill, and proceed with prevention, et cetera. There's a lot of good and detailed information as how to deal with any hazardous spill. Now, it goes on to, they also state in great detail on their emergency response plan as for emergency access, which is also for their emergency shutdown procedures, guidelines for disconnecting a solar facility from the grid. And they go into great detail, talking about which buttons to push, levers to pull, et cetera, in case there's an emergency. So, as they go into great detail on procedures for hazardous spills, they have a detailed emergency response plan for emergency access and also for emergency shutdown, procedure guidelines for disconnecting a solar facility from the electrical grid. Question, is this emergency response plan in case of a cascading fire?
No, that emergency response, the, it's more based off of the Mass DEP regulations for spills. So, you'd have to hire an LSP and all that other information. So, that's, that's more so, that's not for that, no.
That's for your construction phase?
Correct.
All right. So, my other question, I mean, why is there no emergency response plan on how to put out a lithium battery fire? After all, it's a piece of equipment you are responsible for. Everything we have heard so far from even experts on how to put out such a fire can be detrimental to humans and the environment. I would expect that this plan and every other plan that comes forward should have a lot of information about how to put out the fire. They create a product, just as a car or anything else. They create a product that they know could be a hazard, but they provide no information about how to deal with it.
If I may?
Yes.
You know, all good points, but I think we've already established a half an hour ago that the project is a far...
Yeah.
Is a long way from presentable.
Yes, I worried. So, I just wanted to just bring that up.
Thank you.
I think you made your point.
Thank you, I'm done, thanks.
He knows he has some work.
Yeah, thank you. It's a nice meeting.
Nice meeting. Is nobody online? Nobody in the room? Okay. So, we know what our homework is?
Yes.
What's that, I'm sorry? Okay. Okay, wanna be fair, whatever it might be.
Okay. Hello?
Hello. Could you identify yourself, please?
Yes, my name is Patricia Zimmer, and I live at 370 County Road.
Yeah.
I just wanted to let you know that I'm, I'm here. And that, first off, I wanted to thank you for at least starting to hear the application proceedings, because this, this project is very important to me. One thing that I might be able to clarify for you, the screening from County Road, this project is, would be set quite a ways back from the road. If you're driving down, there's no way you would be able to be looking at this project and still be driving.
Well, the...
So, I don't believe it's an issue. It's quite a ways back from the road.
I think that will be addressed as, as the young man before us, you know, refines his project and moves this forward. But, you know, it will be something that's discussed and verified and whatnot. But we appreciate the input.
All right, well, I thank you, I thank you for hearing, hearing me.
Okay, thanks so much. No more comments, questions for tonight? Nobody online? Okay, so, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for 12-23, 370 County Road LLC Site Plan Review and Special Permit, 370 County Road, to the first planning board meeting in January of 2024, which would be January 8th. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I moved, I so moved, second.
So, we have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by, I'm gonna give this one to Jane.
Okay.
All in favor? Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
No continued public hearings. We have our upcoming planning board schedule. Referrals are the business, member comments?
I will just alert the board that after consultation with town council, it's been determined that we need to renotice the battery storage bylaw public hearing, which we will do. And that's, I think, scheduled to come back to us on...
October 9th? Okay. Sam?
Motion to adjourn.
That's what I was looking for. Motion to adjourn.
I watch.
Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste, all in favor? Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Look at that, we got through a whole meeting. I didn't, I didn't have to yell at you, not one time.